All right, it's March 1st, 2022, 7:31 PM. Going to call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present, Andy Marco, Doug Roberts, Joe Hall, John Tehan, and Bob Shabbitt. All right, item C, applications to be received. PZ-22-5, special permit for warehouse addition. 136 Penny Hill Road, DCR, Design Community Residential Zone. Owner, Cassels Patricia, ETA, applicant Sean Cassels. That's just, what's that, Doug, just received?
Yep, so we'll schedule the public hearing for the next meeting.
All right, item B, PZ-22-7, zone change from R80 to DC Design Commercial. 25 Maholic Road owner, CLB, Wellington LLC, applicant William Clark.
It's the same thing there, just going to be received, and we'll do the legal notice in a butter's mailing.
Okay. How far in the future, we figure we'll have that on the agenda?
So we're going to try to get those scheduled for, if we can, the upcoming meeting in two weeks. Unless we run into issues with the mailings or the legal notice.
Okay. Item C, PZ-22-6, special permit renewal section 15 excavation. Sand and gravel at 66 Navartil Road. Owner Wayne C. Williams, applicant Lynn Golden.
That's a one-year renewal of an existing sand and gravel operation, just like we've done for the others. So we have that one which will be coming up, and the Desiato property, which we already received, will also be coming up.
Okay, so they'll be on either the upcoming meeting or the one after it?
They're both only for one year, so there will be no public hearings, so they'll just be treated as a regular item.
Okay. And item D, public hearing, so it's the continuation of PZ-21-24, special permit for signage at Love's Travel Stop, 3 Polster Road. Applicant Betty Torrance, owner of Love's Travel Stop and Country Stores Incorporated. And I thought I saw Greg on here, so take it away.
Hopefully I'm visible. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I believe this time we have everything complete. We did get the data on the LEDs for the pricing, both in green and red, nits and lumens, I believe, and daytime and nighttime levels. So I submitted that, I believe it made it into the document package. And the engineers were able to pull together a revised version of our landscaping plan from the special permit generally that does depict the signs. And then for the street sign, the landscaping at the base. I could share the screen, but I think it's pretty straightforward. Happy to go over it, but each of the signs were located on the landscaping plan with relationship to the various landscaping. And after we addressed the shrubbery at the foot of the street sign, I believe we've covered everything the regulations require.
A question for Mike. Mike, how did the lumens and stuff come out?
Yeah, so one of the, so there's a document in the packet, which is from ESCO, which is their lighting engineer manufacturer. And he lists the specific foot candles for the different graphics by color. And he says that he's reviewed the dark sky, international dark sky standards, and that they comply.
Okay. And the landscaping plan.
Yeah, and I can, I can share that if you want to just.
I'd like to see it.
Okay, so Greg, do you want me to pull that up, or do you want to?
Whichever way is least likely to cause technical issues. If you have it there, it's probably going to be less glitchy, so I'm fine with that.
Okay. So the one that I, that I uploaded with the meeting materials, I added a specific call out just to make it a little bit easier for people to see what the thing that I think was most in question, which was the the freestanding sign out along Maholliac.
Right.
So that is. So I can, let me see if I can just make it a little bit bigger.
That's it.
So if you can see, I just called out in the red box here the specific sign. And I've kind of highlighted it in yellow. And then you can see that they've got landscaping around it with the specific quantities, which are referenced lower. Let me see if I can bring that up, just so we can look at what's being proposed. 3J and 4RR. Okay, so. Looks like they're proposing a couple of clusters of.
Junipers, I see.
Yep, so there's two separate clusters of three. And then there was an RR, I believe, which is.
That's rose, rosa, red is the knockout rose, whatever that is.
Yep, so those are two to three feet in height. And the other one is about 18 to 24 inches. No, sorry, I'm reading that wrong.
Right, and just to clarify, this was brought up a while ago, but that sign is 15 feet in height total? It's not sitting up on a stanchion that makes it higher than that?
The engineers told me that the foundations would be nearly flush with the ground.
Okay, because that was a concern, I remember from, I think our first hearing, with, you know, the first day of the hearing. Okay, any, any questions from other commissioners? Again, any questions from any of the other commissioners?
Oh, Bob's muted.
There, just, yeah, I finally opened my mic. I was wondering if the, the fueling areas, if the canopies are going to be lit on the outside, you know, the bright yellow that's there now, is that going to be lit? Or is it just going to be lighting down onto the pumps?
What I would, oh, I don't want to cut you off. I just wanted to jump in and say, the, we've been, I've been working with some of the folks on the, I guess, corporate side, because when the canopies went up, they, they don't match what was submitted originally. So they're working on a response to that. So I, it's not necessarily the case that the red and yellow will remain.
Well, just my question is, are those edges going to be lit? Or are they just going to be non-lit, non-illuminated? And just at night, just the light shining on the bottom of the canopy down onto the pumps?
Yeah, my understanding is they're not going to be carrying any signage on the outside and not any illumination. It should just be shining down from underneath the canopy. I did ask about whether there are going to be signs on that, and, and Love's just decided under the regulations that it wouldn't work.
Okay, that's my only question I had. Thank you.
Okay, and Mike, when do you expect to have a response?
Um, so that was, I, I was reconnected to a couple of different folks. And I think we're working in different areas of the country, so I don't know exactly. I expect to hear an update certainly by the end of the week. But because the, all the architecturals and the facades were approved as part of the planning and zoning permit, they basically need to comply with what was approved, so it's not at all tied to signage. They're not asking for signage on the canopies for this application, so I think.
So this is a separate issue than what we're discussing tonight, okay?
Exactly, yes. I just didn't want people to think that there was going to be lighting associated with the canopies that may very well need to be changed.
Okay. All right, so Bob was our only commissioner with a question, so I'm going to open it up to the public. Yes, Ralph. Go ahead, Ralph.
Good evening, y'all.
Yep, go ahead.
Ralph Tullis, 47 Village Hill Road. Going back to the minutes of the February 1st meeting, my comments were not quite recorded correctly. I had emphasized that the sign, as depicted on their sign application, was 15 feet tall from the base plate of the post to the top of the sign. And the next issue is, again, as Mr. McCracken pointed out, that the foundation would be flush with the ground, that's fine. But where that sign situated is on a slope. One post is going to be higher than the other. The sign regulations do not address how that should be handled with respect to sign height. Is it the short side, 15 feet? Is it the tall side that's 15 feet? Or should it be an average of the two at 15 feet? The regulations don't cover that, and I really think they should. It would be very, very helpful. So number one, as far as how my comments were quoted in the minutes, I would appreciate these minutes, the minutes of this meeting, correct my comments. Now, moving on to the canopy, one of the things that we need to be careful about is the definition of a sign. And when you have a registered trademark, a logo that's a trademark, that's one of the things that's displayed on a sign. So the yellow and red background are the panels on the canopy over the fuel island is a registered trademark logo for Love's. And if I can share my screen, I can show you that. If you'll let me, I'm not, I don't want to jump right in, but if you'll let me share my screen, I can show you that. That is a logo. Logos are what are displayed on signs. So in essence, it makes the entire canopy a sign on four sides or two sides, it depends. So, and if those same panels are put on the building, that's also a sign. So I think you all need to be a little careful about what you consider a sign. The illumination of a sign, and as Bob was talking about, or asking about with those panels, this is a signature of a Love's Travel Park, anywhere in the country. Those colors and that style canopy. And in other pictures of a Love's facility, you will find those eliminated. So I would recommend that the commission consider this carefully. And I hope that the applicant will consider this carefully with respect to our regulations. And I really would like to request that the commission address the sign regulations with respect to height on a sloping surface. Because where that sign is going slopes up from the road to the facility. The retaining wall depicted on that plan has not yet been built. And I'm not even sure that it's going to be built. Because it looks like that, that grade, that slope is stable as it currently sits. I can't vouch for that fact. Okay. One of the things that was promised early on with this application is that the existing row of pine trees along the Hayok Road were going to remain intact. What's depicted on that plan that we just saw, it was that they were going to get cut back. So if you want to dig back into the records of some of the public hearings, that was, that was a point that was brought up about those, those pine trees remaining. So, and they will become problematic as time goes on. So it would be helpful if this commission were to consider not only the current state, but the future state of those, that line of pine trees. I'd be happy to respond to any questions anyone might have as far as my comments. But I think that's it for the moment.
Thanks, Ralph. Kathy Demers.
Yes, hi, Kathy Demers, 48 Mason Road. First of all, I'd just like to say that I think that the signage that's going on the street is, has been done very tastefully. I applaud Love's for keeping the design rather simple. But I do agree with Mr. Tullis that the commission should be cautious about what goes on the canopy. As Mike mentioned, and I did bring this to his attention today, that the original design that was provided during the public hearings in 2019 showed the canopy, the panels, as matching the fascia on the main building with a Love's sign on it. So I was assuming that the signage issue that's on that would be taken up during this time period. As we know, the, if you can see from Polster's Road, Polster Road now, that the fuel canopies have gone up, and they do contain that graphic design, which is a trademark. So that could be considered a sign. And I'm imagining that if they come up with some other idea of how they're going to handle that, that it would have to come back to this body if there is any type of signage on those panels. The illumination concerns I would have about that is because they're four-sided, and that light from those panels, if it does become an illuminated sign, could shine into areas causing more light pollution. The applicant's property is adjacent to the Nipmick State Forest. We know that there have been pools on the applicant's property. So minimizing light pollution is very important. And I hope that the commission will consider that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was the letter from ESCO Manufacturing that talks about the foot candles for the graphics. I am assuming this means the signage that is going on the building is perhaps the Love's signage that's on the street sign. And it talks about the foot candles. And I was on the Dark Sky website, which I would encourage all of you to go on sometime, because it's, it's very good. And the recommended illumination levels for surface of signs is two foot candles. So I guess I'm wondering how ESCO could say that the signage is compliant. So again, you know, the recommendations from Dark Skies, and anything we can do to minimize light pollution is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Further questions from the public? Comments? All right, Mike?
Yep.
Yeah, so Ralph brings up a good point about the trademark and so forth on the canopy.
So.
What was your take on that?
Yeah. Connecticut has some very specific legal guidance or case law, if you will, that dictates what is an advertising sign. So there's a case, I will mispronounce it if I try to repeat it. And, and it was a Connecticut Supreme Court case, which basically says that towns can only regulate an advertising sign. And an advertising sign is something which, you know, and it goes on to this big, long explanation about basically promoting a good or a service. I don't know that the colors red and yellow directly correlate to that, because red and yellow could be Donald's, it could be Shell gas, it could be a lot of things.
So figured in the way of a trademark, wouldn't be?
I don't, the, the way that, that I'm looking at those canopies is the fact that they're painted yellow and red, though I, I think they'll need to be changed anyways. I don't think that, that based on all of that legislation, we can say they are signs.
Okay, so you're still of the opinion we should keep these separate for the purpose of this hearing?
Right, yeah, what, they, they have to build the canopies which comply with the, with the approvals that you guys gave. And so that's a totally separate and unrelated issue. The canopies for this application are not proposed to have any signage on them. So, you know, I don't, I don't think there's anything going on with the canopies that's part of the signage application. The other thing that I'll mention related to some of the things that we talked about is that condition 31 of their original special permit says that all exterior lighting on the building or within the site shall be Dark Skies compliant pursuant, pursuant to the International Dark Sky Association. So whether there's lighting here, there, on a sign, on the property, everything on the, on the site needs to be compliant. And if we had a question, or if there was an issue once the site was operational, they would be able to do a photometric review to determine if there were any issues. One of the conditions, which I'm going to recommend the commission include in any decision, would basically make it clear that we're approving a signage application. We're not modifying or replacing or superseding any of the previous approvals and any of the previous approval conditions to make it clear that some of the stuff related to lighting or anything else would still be in place.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to have to come up with a draft.
Yeah.
For this, you know, and include all that in it.
And I think that related to the last point, relate to the sign height.
As far as one side being lower than the other, and you know, on the.
I think, you know, the, the condition I had written was the maximum height of the freestanding sign in Maholliac Road shall not exceed 15 feet in height at its highest point. If one side has to be 14 feet, six inches, I think they can handle that. You know, if, if, we can't change the zoning regulations now. So I think we just included as 15 feet max height. And I think that.
And that's what it's going to be at the highest point.
Exactly.
Okay. Very good. So Ralph, you.
I'm still here, I'm sorry. I, I would respectfully disagree with Mike with respect to the panels and the colors, yellow and red. When a corporation has a registered trademark with a particular pattern of red and yellow, that's a logo. And that consists or would compromise a sign, in my opinion. So be careful here.
Well, Mike, Mike's dealing with this anyway, because it wasn't on the original agreement that those panels.
Understood.
That, so I trust that he's going to deal with it effectively. Kathy?
I just want to reiterate what Mr. Tullis is saying, that it is a registered trademark. The definition of a trademark is a type of intellectual property that consists of a recognizable sign, design, or expression that identifies products or services from a particular source and distinguishes them from others. And I, maybe we should get, you know, I would suggest some legal counsel on this in case it becomes an issue with the applicant. The other thing is, the Dark Skies model lighting ordinance is a template. It's not regulation. I'm not sure how the town itself can enforce the meeting those standards, an applicant meeting those standards. I think that's something the commission should relook at as a separate issue. Because I think it would be difficult to to force an applicant under a condition to follow Dark Skies. So I think that's something that you as a commission need to readdress and look at in terms of regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, any further questions from the public or comments? Any further questions or comments from the commission? All right, Mike, anything further?
Not unless you have any additional questions for me or follow-up.
No, it's just we got to deal with that canopy.
Yeah, could I be heard on that, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just going through these things, kind of one at a time, as they came up. I'd certainly be amenable to an average approach in terms of how to handle the slope. But if the commission's decision is the maximum height is 15 feet from whatever point we choose, I'll certainly accept that. I don't think it's worth fighting over. Maybe in the future, the regulations could be made more clear. But I, I don't think that six inches is going to be fatal on this whole thing. I would note, just to put all of this in perspective, in terms of Love's general practices, out of 500-plus locations that they have, this is the most conservative sign package they have ever done. There is less signage, less light, less logo, less color than anywhere else in the entire country that Love's has put a travel stop and country store. So I really believe that Love's is doing its level best to fit into this town and be reasonable. And I hope still be able to make a living at this location and have people find it. And that is really one of the concerns. Certainly, when we laid out the landscaping plan, the idea was to actually have the street sign be visible to potential customers without needlessly disrupting the landscape or putting in anything higher than we could really get approved. I believe that it fits well, I think it's reasonable. I think the level is clearing or appropriate, and the shrubbery was provided. So there shouldn't be any issues on that. The canopy, I believe, was covered as part of the special permit. I completely disagree that it's a sign under the case law. I doubt that very many people around here would look at that yellow and orange and the pattern and say, oh, my gosh, it's Love's, they're selling diesel for $3.49 a gallon. I can tell just by looking at the canopy, that's what's going on. I think it's trade dress, I think it's just an item of decor. And more importantly, I would agree that it was covered in the special permit, and we'll need to build the canopy in compliance with those approvals. So in all likelihood, the thing's going to end up being mooted. And any signage that was on the original depiction of the canopy was not approved under the original special permit. And we're here now and saying that there won't be any lettered signage, or I believe anything that qualifies as an advertising sign in Connecticut. So I don't believe that should be an issue. In terms of the dark sky, we have our manufacturer saying that it complies. I'm not aware that Ms. Demers is a lighting expert or an engineer or anything else on that. I note her comment and would defer to what's in the record in terms of compliance. If there are any issues, as Mike D'Amato mentioned, I think we can deal with them specifically in practice. But I don't anticipate any, and I believe this illumination will be more attenuated and more appropriate for the location than probably any other truck stop you're going to see in the state of Connecticut. So really, looking at this thing from a broader perspective, I really believe that Love's has done, again, its level best on all of that. So just wanted that to be heard, and I don't think there are any insurmountable problems here.
No, thank you, Greg. And I think, you know, we can agree too, that, you know, the place needs to be visible to some extent for safety purposes and everything. We don't want trucks wandering around the countryside, you know, looking for this place. You know, they, that's the purpose of a sign, so you can spot a business and do what you need to do there and leave, so.
Agreed, and I saw Love's in Tuscola, Illinois this past weekend. And I can tell you that their, their sign must have been close to 100 feet high, so I mean.
I've seen plenty of them when I'm traveling, you know, most truck stops, Love's included. I've, I've seen plenty of them when I'm traveling. You know, most truck stops, Loves included, they're brightly lit up, tall signs.
Yeah.
They're usually in, you know, some of the states with, that are relatively flat too, so you see them from a long way off. You know, that, that's not, uh, that's not what we wanted here, like, you know, that kind of illumination, you know, for good reason.
Granted, and I, I think this will fit.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, before we, uh, before we close the public hearing, is there anything more at all from commissioners, the public? Okay, can I, uh, anyone have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings closed. So Mike, you're gonna put together a, a draft, uh?
Motion. I can show you or read to you what I have at this point. Um, it's basically three conditions. Um, and we can, if you want me to tweak it or, um, you know, kind of, I guess, add something additional that you don't think I covered, we can do that. And I can, I mean, go to the next meeting or I can show you what I have and we can go from there now.
Why don't you show us what you got?
Agreed.
So let me read the first one. I'll just read it while I bring it up. So the first condition would be that the maximum height of the freestanding sign on the Hollyack Road shall not exceed fifteen feet in height at its highest point. I'd originally written that, I don't know what the commission's thoughts are on this, you know, it's, it is a little bit interesting, given the height of the TA across the street. But if we're trying to make sure that we all understand how to measure the height of the sign, one thing that I thought I could add was, um, at the end of that, basically, it would say, when measured at a point six inches above finished grade. And I think what that does is it gives them six inches to put any puddings in the ground and have anything project above natural grade, which, which these things are gonna have to do. Um, but it's still base, it basically says that that highest point of the sign at, at a max will be fifteen feet, six inches. Whether the base material can, i- is considered to be part of the sign, you know, you can argue either way, but I'm, I'm trying to not quibble over a couple of inches when they're trying to locate these puddings in the ground, which are gonna be required by the building code. It's not something that they're gonna, they're gonna do, you know, just because.
I, I, I agree with you, Mike. We, we don't wanna be ridiculous, you know, we want, we wanna be fair, but, you know, we don't want a super high sign. And we want it within the realm here of what we're asking for.
Yeah, um, so I, I can, I can include that, and I can actually add a note that says finish six inches above finished grade per the approved site plan. So essentially, if the grading on that portion of the property matches the approved site grading that we, is part of the site plan, they have a six inch wiggle room for, to get the puddings where they need to be, and then they have a fifteen foot sign. Um, the next condition was basically, um, the approval of this application does not modify, amend, or replace any of the approval criteria or conditions required by approvals, PZ nineteen dash twelve, which was your approval, and, um, the IWWA nineteen dash one, which was incorporated as part of that. Not that it would, not that in any case, in any court of law, they would rec, suggest that that's what was happening, but just to make folks clear, um, and then, you know, if there was some concern. So we do not have requirements in any part of our zoning regs, which, which say that things have to be meet the standards of the International Dark Sky Association. What we have generally required is that people provide us with information that they, that the standards of the um, International Dark Sky Association are met. But we don't require the seal, because the only thing that the seal you, you need to do to get the seal is pay the Dark Sky Association a fee. So I do not feel that, that there is any issue with the town's approval citing those standards as a condition. Um, certainly, we'd like to have them in the regulations, but, um, and we're working on that with what we're working on in the office, but I don't think that that puts us in a position where any approvals are, are shaky. So if there's a condition that you folks are thinking about, you know, I, I was trying to, to basically craft a condition which would read something along the lines of, the applicant shall provide confirmation that the lighting installed meets the specifications of what they've proposed here. But it's a bit redundant, because they have to comply with what they've proposed here. So I'd be open to what your thoughts are on, if you think a third condition is necessary and that you.
I personally don't think it is, but I'll defer to what other commissioners obviously have to say.
I think we're good with the two.
Yeah, I just want to mention the, uh, my interpretation of the dark skies uh, initiative was to prevent light trespass. So ideally, all of the light that I create on my property doesn't bleed into someone else's property. So regardless of how the spirit of that is met, I think that that's, to me, that's the overarching issue is that as long as the light doesn't cascade into the woods, doesn't go into the state parks, doesn't do, you know, stops at their boundary, whatever fixtures they use to get there is fine. Or whatever methods or design standards, that, that would be the, to me, the important part.
All right. Any other, uh, comments from commissioner, suggestions, anything? All right, I think those two conditions are good, Mike.
Okay. If you want me to, is this something the commission wants to make a decision on tonight? You want me to share my screen or?
Well, we don't have it, uh, so we have the public hearings. We, wouldn't we have to move that into, uh, unfinished, you know, new business or something if we were gonna vote on this?
Yeah, so you could, um, you could add it to new business or unfinished business, whatever you prefer. It's a regular meeting, so you can do that, um, by vote. Um, it's up to whatever you guys prefer.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, to move, uh, uh, the, uh, special permit for the signage at Loves Travel Stop to unfinished business.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so it's in unfinished business. We'll get to it after the, uh, the next public hearing here. All right, so public hearing, uh, BPZ dash twenty-two dash four, proposed zoning regulations, section twelve point five, new strategic development zone, SDZ applicant, the planning and zoning commission.
Um, all right, so you want me to just give a quick overview?
Yes.
So this is something that the commission has been working on for a, a fair bit of time. And, and essentially, it is the, the, it would constitute the establishment of a new zone called the Strategic Development Zone, which is a inherently a special development district. And the, the intent of this is to basically provide two different approaches for how a, a large strategic development would, would seek and obtain approval from the town. This is not something that Dunkin' Donuts, Dollar General, or, you know, uh, the, you know, the gas station along the highway, something small. This is not what this zone and, and this process is intended for. These are for large-scale projects in excess of five acres, um, that meet the criteria within the regulation. And it basically provides for two pathways, the traditional process um, of a, of a development district where you submit, um, a special permit and a zone change application with, um, a seventy percent design concept plan, which is referred to as the master plan. We would have a public hearing on the zone change, um, and the special permit and review of the master plan. And then the com- commission would issue a decision. They would then come back for final approval at a hundred percent design, and that would be done via site plan. So the commission would review for all the criteria and the regulations just as they would with everything else, but not, there would not be a public hearing, because at that point, we would already have looked at the property, we would have looked at the, um, the use, the layout, um, all of the criteria, it's just the nuts and bolts which are finalized in that last step. Um, so that's the traditional special development district process, that would be option one, which we're calling traditional. And then this, the up, the second option, which is a proactive approval process, requires the submission of the zone change application with a thirty percent, um, design concept plan. We have a public hearing on the, the zone change only. Um, and then we do a review of the master plan. You would issue a decision based on those. And then they would come back to us with a hundred percent site plan, and we would have a public hearing on that special permit at that point. The purpose of this is to provide an option for, for property owner and developers who want to have some tangible, um, buy-in from the commission, from the town, to show that some of these projects have been endorsed. When you're trying to get tenants nowadays, particularly, or, or get financing, et cetera, on larger projects, going to them and saying, well, we could go through the approval process and it could take a year is not something that builds a lot of confidence, and that's a, a struggle for these projects. If you look at the amount of time it took Loves, for example, granted, that was very complicated. That spun for, for a really, really long time, and speed to market is, is really important when you're competing at this point nationally. So we wanted to provide a process by which they could get a high-level approval to engage a tenant and then come back to us with all of their i's dotted and t's crossed. So that's an overview. I can go through the specifics if you want, but I'm also happy to stop talking if you prefer that too.
Well, for the commission's purposes, I think we kind of understand the specifics, 'cause we've already been through them. So I think probably open it up to the public for questions or comments. Anyone from the public?
Let's see, Ralph.
Go ahead, Ralph.
Why would I not comment? Uh, Ralph Tillis, forty-seven Bill Hill Road.
An expectation.
I know, I know. Um, in reviewing this section that, uh, has been put together here, um, give me a second, 'cause I'm, I'm scrolling through it. Fifteen point one, three point three, A and B. Um, Mike, yeah, I'm sure you can find them right off the bat. Uh, they seem to conflict with each other, and, and I, I'd like to understand how this is going to work. Because what Mike just said is this SDZ applies to a large-scale development of five acres or more. But paragraph B talks about, well, it says minimal parcel size of five acres, sure. But it says not in a DC or DI zone. Yet A says the only place you can apply it as DZ is in a design, a DC or DI zone. So.
What are you reading from now?
I'm reading from the draft of this section.
Okay, where, where did you find that? What am I missing?
Page two top.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't saying. Thanks. Okay.
I'm just trying to understand why we have something that appears to be somewhat conflicting.
Do you want me to respond?
Go ahead and respond, Mike.
So A basically says that, that parcels within existing commercial zone, DC or DI, are eligible for this, um, special development zone or strategic development zone. But if it is not located in those something areas, the parcel must be at least five acres in size. And the, the normal process of going through, if somebody wanted to develop a parcel, we wouldn't want them to first do a zone change to DC, so that they could then be eligible for this zone. So we're, we're making it clear that if you're not located in those areas, we want you to have a parcel of at least five acres in size. So it is, they don't, um, play off of one another. They're separate and distinct, I guess is one way to say it.
Okay, it just seemed confusing to me, Mike, that's all. Um, the other thing is, a- as you just stated, this is for major, large-scale developments. Where in this section is it stated that the development itself has to be a large-scale five acres or more?
I think that's the section that we just read.
It, it, no, it, that says minimum parcel size. You may not develop five a, the full five acres. What is to prevent a Dunkin' Donuts from, from applying this to a five-acre site and only develop two acres?
So, you know, I think that the purpose statement and the overall vision in the front end of this make it fairly clear that, that this is not for something like that. But because it's a special development district, the, the commission first has to be convinced that the pro, the project and the location makes sense. Then they have to be convinced that the use works. You know, there's a, there's a number of criteria. And, and specifically, in, in the special development district sort of realm of, of zoning, the commission could deny an application simply because they decided that the sky was green. There is no, there, because this is a special district, and there is already an underlying zoning regulation which applies, there is absolutely no obligation for the commission to approve this, regardless of if they need all the criteria. It is completely discretionary, and the, the courts have, um, provided guidance on that. So this is not falling under the same criteria as a, as a more traditional application, where if they check the boxes and they meet the regulations, it's an approval. It's totally discretionary.
Okay, please, please understand, uh, all of you, that I, I, I'm not trying to fight this. I think this is a, uh, this could be a very beneficial thing for a large-scale development to help expedite the process. Uh, and, and I get that. Particularly when there's, uh, any, something other than, uh, the financing comes through something other than their own wallet. Uh, Loves, uh, has been very cooperative and very tolerant of all that we've put them through over the years. And I won't editorialize on that. I just want to understand how this is going to work and understand what tools the commission has to fight something that might not be desirable, that's all. Otherwise, I think it's, I, I think it's a good concept. And I'll, I'll shut up now.
Great. Appreciate the comments, uh, Ralph. Kathy?
Hi, I'm Kathy Demers, forty-eight Mason Road. Um, I just wanted a quick question, 'cause I was reading through this as well. Is this the reason for the public hearing? Is it to discuss the concept? Or basically, is it to really look at this in a more detailed level? Because some of the formatting I found very difficult to follow, and I just had some general suggestions, um, that would make it easier to read. Um, for example, on page three, um, where you're talking about traditional uh, SDZ applications. When you go to two, then small A, master concept plan requirements, and then further down, you've got another two A. I'm wondering if formatting-wise, the first small A should actually be a capital A. I, I just found it very hard to kind of follow things because of the formatting. It, it's just one of those comments. And then my other question is, the traditional, um, pathway that you're describing here, is this already something that was, that's developed? Um, and you're basically just rewrite, rewriting it the exact same way as we already have in our regulations? Because I didn't see anything in there about fire suppression, for example. Um, but that was under the proactive application. So those were my questions. Thanks.
Go ahead, Mike.
So the first question was about whether or not it with, about the formatting. So I was just gonna try to pull up the word version of it. I, if it's just needs to be flipped to a capital A, that's no big deal, I can do that right now. And. Yeah, so that, that's not a big deal. I just, I just modified that in the draft and, and the formatting and the specifics. You know, when they ultimately is codified into the regulations, it will, we will match it with the formatting there so that it fits in with the previous. Section um, and, and matches the organization. So I just changed that. And then the second one was related to fire suppression. And I think that when we were talking about that, um. Think Commissioner Sinasky brought that up, which is why that. So I can, we can certainly add that same language. Which is subsection F, the proposed method for fire suppression in locations of any fire ponds and or dry hydrants. We can include that as well. So that would go under traditional. So that's, that's not a big deal.
Excuse me, Mike, I just want to clarify that I wasn't talking about just one area, just one page. That was an example of the formatting. I think if you look throughout the document, that. The small A is used in every section like that. So I'm just wondering if it should be a capital A so that it doesn't get confusing later if there are other. Paragraphs under those sections that are using a small A, for example.
Mike, did you reiterate, you're gonna match the format in our regular zoning regulations?
Yeah, we'll go through it and make sure that everything, everything fits.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions and comments? All right, Mike, you think you'd have time by our next meeting to have this cleaned up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does anybody have any, any other questions for me just about the mechanics of the actual reg? How it, how it works or any of the specific criteria?
I understand why we're doing it.
Well, I, I think, Mike, I think you, I think you made it, uh, you clarified most of that when you went through it with us the first time. First time through, you pretty well explained how everything was gonna work.
Okay.
All right, gonna make a motion to close public hearing, uh. PZ dash twenty-two dash four. All in favor? All right, nothing under new business, so unfinished business. We have the affordable housing plan review and we also have the uh. The special permit for signage at Loves. Why don't we tackle that one first?
Okay, so based on what we talked about, this is. So, big enough?
Yes.
Yeah, it's good.
Yep, would someone like to make a, make this motion?
I'll, I'll do the motion. Uh, we need a motion to approve PZ twenty-one dash twenty-four, special permit for signage at Loves Travel Stop. Three Polster Road applicant Betty Turnst- Torstensen, sorry. Owner Love Travel Stop and Country Store conditions. Uh, the first condition is. The maximum height of the freestanding sign on Mahalak, Mahalak Road shall not exceed fifteen feet in height at the highest point. When measured at a point six inches above finished grade for the approved site plan. The second condition is the approval of this application does not modify, amend, or replace. Any of the approval criteria or conditions required by approvals, PZ nineteen dash twelve and IWWA nineteen dash one.
I'll second it. All in favor? Okay. It's approved. All right, next item, affordable housing plan, review of the recommendation list.
Um, so, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody saw as part of the um, application or the agenda that went out. Basically, the, the draft recommendation list that Rachel talked about. And we can bring it up if anybody didn't see it, but I will give the floor over to Rachel.
Yeah, um, I don't know if, if anyone had um, a chance to look at any of the recommendi- recommendations that we'd sent last time. But it's a pretty substantive list. Um, I don't know if any stood out to anyone who read that.
I'd li- I'd like to have it projected.
Sure. Okay. So it's broken down between administrative steps. Regulatory changes and town policy changes for investments. And there's really a range of items here, things as like, simple as. Creating a website for housing resources um. To implementing inclusionary zoning. So the range is like, pretty wide. But the purpose was just so that everyone could see kind of like the menu of items and. Um, if any stood out to you, then we can talk about them. Or if you have questions on any.
We're establish the housing committee, is that through the select, selectmen's office? How does that work?
Um, I believe that would be through the selectman.
Yeah, they would have to establish um, the group and whether it be, you know, an elected or an appointed. And what their responsibilities were.
Is, is that what other towns are doing?
So. Rachel probably can speak to this a little bit more. I think that it kind of depends on what the takeaways are from the plan. You know, to have another group of people that you're gonna try to fill out a board with and have them do something, you know.
That, that concerns me a little. You know, just, it's not easy keeping a full. You know, compliment of commissioners on, on most commissions.
Yeah, I think like a lot of it depends on like, kind of the need, like how much, how much are you willing to task them with? So it might not be particularly suitable. Um, for Wellington, but I mean, if you're thinking about doing like a lot of these recommendations. Then something like that might be good just to like, have a body dedicated to dealing with. Dealing with implementation of things like that. Um, I don't know if you want me to go through all of them or. I don't know what's best.
So there's administrative steps, then there's this, this, then there was.
Regulatory changes and then like policies and investments.
So what if, what if we just went through subsection B? Because those would be related to the, something that the, this commission could do.
Sure. Um, so ADUs, I guess we're not really gonna deal with that because you guys are opting in. Number ten is implementing uh, inclusionary zoning on developments over a certain size. Um, this is just requiring that developers set aside a certain uh, amount of their. Units um, for a certain size development um, to be affordable housing. Um, and there's a lot of variations of this um, that the town could do depending on. The needs and um, kind of what you guys want to get out of it. Um, but like. Um, allowing developers to um, basically do like a fee and lieu. If they don't want to include affordable housing units is something that can generate um, money for the town to develop. Affordable housing in the future, um, or, you know, maintain or repair housing, that type of thing. Um, so that's one that a couple of towns have looked into.
Could that also be used for the rent buydown that I saw here?
I believe so. It seems like you can pretty much appropriate the money for like, anything related to affordable housing. Yeah. Yeah. Um, number eleven is allowing for middle-density housing as of right in target areas and as large historic home retrofits. Obviously, Wellington has um, not as much single-family housing as some towns, but it has a lot of single-family housing, so.
Does that mean turn it into a duplex or?
Yeah, like allowing duplexes on more lots or lower density, um, multifamily, like three to four unit developments.
Can you go back up to number one, uh, the first one or number nine?
Sure.
Accessory dwelling units, ADUs, that's uh, your mother-in-law cottage for lack of a better word. Now, we say as of right, that, that's, that's strong. That's pretty strong language.
Yeah.
That's like, that's like forestry, that's, we don't really step in on that, right? I mean, that's my misinterpreting that. When I see as of right. I see the planning and zoning commission does not have much regarding terms and conditions. Am I wrong there? I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I just want to make sure I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, as of right, that's what that means. All right.
So that one, um, the PA twenty-one, twenty-nine. Requires all towns in Connecticut to allow accessory dwelling units as of right, unless they choose to opt out.
We've opted in.
Not yet.
No?
Not yet.
Okay.
That's what we're doing all this for.
I know, I've been conspicuously absent, I apologize.
Yeah.
Any other?
What's the penalty for opting out?
So there's some specif- if a community does not want to um. Allow for, so we, we already allow for accessory apartments. I mean, they're, they're called in-law apartments, we already allow for them. There's a couple of things that we would need to change to be in compliance with the act, but um. So we would take away the special permit requirement and we could still include much of the criteria that we have. Um, there's no, there's no penalty for, for saying we're not gonna do this. There may be an additional. No, I think it's the. Is it the parking and Rachel, we may need to look at this, is it the parking or is it the ADUs that also requires? The legislative body, in this case Board of Selectmen.
Um, I'm not sure, I can look that up.
I think that if you wanted to opt out. In certain circum- there's a couple of things that you can opt out from in the PA twenty-one, twenty-nine. And, and at least one of them requires that the, the, in this case, Board of Selectmen also. Falls in line with the recommendation.
So it would be, I guess it'd be helpful to know, you know, what's the penalty if we didn't do some of these things versus, you know, if we did. It just, just for our own. Knowledge.
Yeah, we can, we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying yes or no, just.
Neither am I, I'm just, you know, we don't wanna, I want to understand that very carefully, that it's not a free-for-all.
Right, A, I don't know, just somehow an accessory unit and then a middle-density housing. Um, in large homes and higher unit multi, they start to feel very different to me. But I'm not saying any of it's wrong or I'm against it, it just feels different. And it's all in one thing, either vote the whole bill or you don't vote any of it, so, I don't know, just something to talk about.
I, I want to make sure people aren't living in a garage.
Yeah, right, that's right. And then, that has happened.
Yes, it has.
I think it's important to, to when, so this list is just a sort of a menu of à la carte. That you guys can go through and say, you know, we like some of these, we don't, and we want to incorporate them into the plan, but you should think of this like the POCD. In the sense of ultimately, if you like nine and ten. Then the affordable housing plan will say that the town should work to implement eight dash two I or to allow. So if, by including these in the affordable housing plan, you're not actually making the regulatory changes, you're just. Suggesting that the town go through the process to, to consider and evaluate.
Thank you for that. That, that makes it feel better.
Well, that makes sense looking at it that way. You know, obviously, we, we need to do something.
It sometimes is easier to have a.
Yep.
List in front of you, you can say, okay, here's three pages of things that we might want to consider. We like this, we don't like that, rather than just trying to. Work and figure them out. You know, as you go.
You know, we could probably spend a whole meeting on this topic, Mike. And, and we probably should, and we probably should.
Yeah, it's um, it's, it's definitely become a very. Important and, and sort of a hot-button issue.
I, I, I agree, you know, I've heard some of the commentary out of other towns and, and so forth. I, I, I think we need to do it right. And we need to do it in a way that works for the town and works for obviously lower-income people.
Absolutely.
It, it needs to be a win-win.
Yep, I agree.
Yeah, there's, there's like a lot here, but I think maybe if we just focus on like regulatory changes. For now, that's a good way to move forward. Um. The number twelve is allowing for higher unit multifamily housing with clear design standards and core areas. Along major transportation corridors.
What's a poorer area?
Um, for Wellington, I. Go ahead, Mike.
I think it would be in, in, you know, we would, we would target some of those specific sections, you know, South Wellington or West Wellington. Basically looking to. Find the, the locations which we think could support the increased density.
And eleven, you know, we use the language as of right, allow middle-density housing as of right, similar to like with the AD uh, accessory dwelling units.
Yeah.
Well, and be, and being mindful that we haven't got sewer or water.
And.
Support.
Well, that's, you're spot on.
Gotta be real careful because you know, you pack a bunch of people into a big old house and, and we. You know, we gotta make sure that fire suppression, all that is adequate.
Would, would any of this affect that guy that wanted to put that development across from uh, Wellington Pizza? With all?
No, he ran into problems with how many units he could put up, I think, based on the land.
I was just wondering if any of this would have changed his approach.
He is looking for, his, his intent was for single-family attached townhouse style.
Right.
For grad students and.
I don't think he went wrong in his concept, he just couldn't do as many as he wanted to make a problem.
But um, if you think back to what we did for the South Wellington Village Zone. We allow um. You know, very small-scale residential, but it's all soils-based, which basically means you have. Which basically means you have to demonstrate that the soils on the property will support a septic based on what you're proposing.
That's an interesting thing, soil-based zoning.
So that's, that's what we have there so that, you know, we don't run into those issues.
Right, right.
Um, yeah, and like down here, this is um. Another like related tool with basically just using like a sanitary um standard for. Determining um.
So six, so sixteen would mean like eliminate arbitrary minimum building dwelling unit size. So we could basically have a two hundred square foot house as long as it met the public health and building codes.
So part of PA twenty-one twenty-nine that you can't opt out of is. We cannot establish how big a house must be. Um.
Bring on the container homes.
Well, containers don't generally meet.
I'm joking, but that's.
But yeah, well.
I don't, I'm not against that, I'm not, I'm not at all against, you have to.
People have called and they ask, if I get a couple of containers and I put them on top of each other, can I have a house? And they don't, they don't meet the installation standards under the building codes or usually.
There's a lot of non-conditional building methods that do and, and they're okay, so. I'm okay.
Yeah.
Lot to think about.
An interesting one, it is really interesting.
It's fascinating.
Um. Let's see. Um, this is a good one um. If you're looking to do some more like lower density um. Think maybe like homes for like elderly people, like ranch style homes um that are affordable. Um, creating zoning regulations for cottage clusters, um incentivizing starter houses and pocket neighborhoods. Um, if we're looking to accommodate um, you know, Wellington's large amount of. Young people who might be trying to own their first home or older people who can't really live in. A two-story house anymore. This is a good one, too.
One of the things I often speak about with people asking about planning and zoning is that why it's important is that. Particularly in towns like Wellington and in this northeast corner, the good land is gone. Uh, now we have land that is sort of confined through wetlands, steep slopes, open ledge. Wetlands, uh, they say well, and twice, so I think all of this stuff becomes more. Kind, we have to talk a lot more about it because it's not just, we have, oh, we got a hundred acre woods, it's perfectly flat. With no water on it, we could just build whatever we want. Now these regulations become rather academic. And you just kind of check the boxes and do a punch list. But as we look at the land that's remaining in Wellington, it's, it's rough. It's, it's not pretty. The nice flat stuff is gone and it's challenging. And there's a lot to think about. Interesting.
Yeah, it's, it is hard um.
Number eighteen there, allow conversion of underused office commercial space. You can make the whole mill multifamily residential units like they did with the threadmill in Willimantic.
If you can find some place to put the sewage.
Yeah, right. Well, that, that bar across the straits already of multifamily unit, isn't it?
It is, and there's nothing we can do about it.
Um, so. Out of these, are there any that kind of stand out to you guys as? Potentially like working for Wellington, maybe I could come back um like next meeting with a more detailed like. What would this actually look like for Wellington? Um, type of thing um. In terms of the regulatory changes that are here.
I think for number seventeen, we've already visited cottage clusters for the seniors.
Uh, that's one I'd like to see more detail on that, that.
You know.
It seems interesting. Um, the one I don't understand is like, you know, one of the ones about a development, so much of it would have to be, I think it's up further.
Oh, inclusionary?
Yes, so say somebody's building a, a neighborhood full of twenty-five hundred square foot homes, what's that mean to that? Do, do you have to build so many that are eight hundred square feet in with it?
Um, yeah, pretty much. Um, the town sets the percentage um that they want to see affordable. Um, and you can allow that the developer opts out. Um, and if they opt out, you can say like, okay, well, you have to pay us um a certain fee um. Usually for like the amount of, I think it's usually for like the amount of affordable units that would have been built. Uh, with the construction, something like a percentage of the construction costs would have been um.
It's pretty, it's interesting that I, Rachel and I were going through this last week. Talking about and, and some inclusionary zoning overview and, and looking at um what. Towns all across the state are doing and um Mansfield is probably the town closest to us. And granted, they're not like us with a lot of the demographics because of Yukon. But they have a housing trust fund which was established pursuant to eight dash two I. And have a, you know, a pending application um for multifamily. And they will be collecting a one point seven million dollar fee from the developer, which will then go into a fund. Which the town can use to create, renovate, or expand affordable housing in Mansfield. And in looking at all of the examples and, and Rachel has a little more time on this than I do. I think that every single example in the state that we kind of looked at in this and found. Uh, is for um. A, apartments, basically. I don't know that any town has gone so far as to say, we're going to take this from you. For a single family development. It's traditionally, you're building two hundred units, ten percent is, you know, you should have at least. Twenty units affordable, deed restricted, and if you're not, you're going to pay us a fee of a hundred thousand dollars. Per unit at twenty units um. So I don't know, Rachel, have you ever seen it applied to a single family development?
No, not in the regulations that I read. It was all multifamily, I think.
How would, Mike, how would that work if somebody proposed a over fifty-five uh development? I know we had one in town uh that was up on the hill behind the old Benton Homestead on thirty-two. Uh, and they had built one out on Route thirty in Tolland. Uh, and those are all high, you know, they're all high-end, smallish type houses, but they're all high-end. If somebody proposed something like that, is, is that someplace where the town could say? Well, you're proposing uh thirty-five houses on this and they're close. Uh, closer than usual because you have a certain amount of open space set aside for uh hiking and such. Could the town come up on that developer and say, you know, you need to build four houses that are for more affordable?
Through the, um, if we adopted an inclusionary zoning regulation, then yes.
Okay.
And to your, your first question, the only thing that the Affordable Housing stuff says is it relates strictly to the cost. So you can have an age-restricted affordable housing, which is basically Button Hill. Um, those units qualify, but they're only for seniors, but, but you could. If everybody decided they really liked that and wanted another one, that would qualify for affordable housing.
Okay.
Yeah, you can, um, some of the inclusionary zoning policies I read, like some of them are extremely detailed, like you can really. Make it very specific to Wellington um.
We do another senior housing development, you don't pay the price with a bunch more kids in school, things like that, that. Has to be absorbed.
Are, are these guidelines, are these? Um. Like, can you say considered but not applied? That kind of thing? I mean, are they? Uh, uh, can we, do, do we, if, if we say, yeah, we think these are. Good things to have in our portfolio of terms and conditions. We just have to always look at them and discuss them and we can opt out of each individual item or. Once we say yes, then like, listen, says as of right, then it kind of takes it out of. We don't have much wiggle room out of that, right? Oh, I, I already said that. Never mind, I'm just blathering, never mind. Thinking aloud.
So I think. I keep stepping on repeat rates, sorry.
No, it's okay.
I would, just based on the discussion and what we're talking about, I would say for a follow-up, if we could maybe. Look at. The cluster development, maybe uh the ADU stuff and the inclusionary zoning maybe. Like flesh those three out a little bit more just to give the commission a sense of if they really wanted to consider this. And put it in the plan as a recommendation, what that would look like.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I, I really want to understand the ADUs a lot more.
Yeah, I'll put, I'll put something together and. Walk you guys through it. Um, I think that's a good idea. Um. Yeah, any others for the regulatory changes or? Good.
Forgive my ignorance, Rachel, what is your role? What, what role do you play?
Um, I'm a community development planner with Taikey.
Okay, and who do you work for or what?
Um, under Mike and John.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
Oh. No, that's okay. I don't think I've like officially introduced myself for a while, so. Um, alright, so uh Mike, Mike, do you think I should go over any of the others or leave it at that for now?
So I think what we'll do is, um, I will, I think I've got this in a PDF. I will post this to our um, to the Affordable Housing Plan page on the website. And I think we should just keep it with us as we continue to go through the plan. So that if we need to refer back to it as we start to flesh things out, but um. You know, we can, we can, if we get to talking about a topic or someone brings up a question, we can refer back to this list and say, how does that? List of recommendations treat it, maybe it'll start to make more, have more context. I don't know, what do the commission feel about that?
I think it's a plan.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I want to understand as much as I can about these, the pros, cons.
There's a lot to digest.
I really.
There's a lot to digest, Bob.
I, I really am intrigued by what Andy mentioned about, you know, maybe. You purposely or not, but this idea that. You know, tr- traditionally the Affordable Housing Plans, you know, I don't know how many recommendations are on this list, the three pages, maybe there's thirty. And then I think what would happen is that, that, the group would take ten of them and they would include them in the Affordable Housing Plan. As recommendations for the town to move forward, but Andy sort of suggested, well, maybe. We take all of them and we kind of create like a table or something and say, we've considered all of them. And we find these to be most applicable and these to be not applicable. And it's kind of interesting because I think it shows that the commission really went through the full spectrum of options. And only recommended the ones that make the most sense. Um, I'm kind of interested in that and if we could do something like that.
Yeah, I mean, a table of like. Thirty recommendations might be like a bit much, but maybe in like more of a narrative form.
Once we come up with, once we come up with a plan, then it goes to public hearing, correct, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, but many, many of these will be your sort of self-exclusionary because we're not doing this because, we're, we're not the investors. We're getting an application. So if somebody comes up with an application, many of these will be, oh, it's not a single family dwelling. Well, it's not this, it's not that. So they'll automatically get, tho- those boxes will be unchecked. And then that, 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 that set of decision, uh, this decision boxes starts to shrink right away. Based on the application. And uh, the, the sort of an à la carte, I don't know, considered but not applied is what kind of jumps out at me. Because it's a lot to think about and they all have merit based on the land where they are. And you get soil type, soil conditions, and it's a lot going on there for, for each piece of that, just each, each little. Decision tree. There's a lot of things to think about. And there's a lot of information we'd be getting, we'd be getting stuff from the Board of Health, we'd be getting information from wetlands and. That starts to shrink that pool of decisions we could make based on the application. Am I wrong? Am I missing something there? I don't, I don't think I, maybe I. I mean, what you say, it's fifty things, but that fifty starts to shrink right away based on the application. We're not the advocates, we're not, we're not saying, here's a piece of property, we're going to develop it, somebody else is kind of up there.
Right, no, I, I, go ahead.
We still need to thoughtfully consider like what we're recommending or whatever. Because you know what, somebody can say, hey, you know, apartment buildings for everyone, as long as it's not in my neighborhood. It's good for you over here, you know, we'll make this the spot. And then you have six people on a commission, you know, vote ye- yes for it and, you know, our, our track uh record of public hearings. A handful of people will show up and then everybody will complain later.
Oh, I was just thinking about, let's say that somebody comes up and says, hey, I got this huge house. You know, I've got a, I don't know, I, I can't think of one, I don't know, say the old, the old hall uh, the, it was the nursing mall. Yeah, you pick up a structure like that and say, hey, I own this place, I'm living there alone, I want to turn that into a multifamily and they go, sorry, the. Deceptic, the, the Board of the Eastern Highlands Health says, no, sorry. There's not, deceptive doesn't allow it, then that automatically kills that aspect of my, what, right? I mean, that's not. Sort of regardless of what these rules might suggest you can do, there are other factors that sort of.
Or, or you spend the money and improve the septic to.
That's right, and then it's okay, it's absolutely right, you could say, oh, we're going to do this mini sewage thing, well, that's good for you. Spend the money, we're okay with that. I would think. I love this stuff, it's fascinating.
Is there anything else you think Rachel should try to flesh out for the next week beyond those three?
The US DA and CHFA financing support, that's a good way to. To do this, that, that's an administrative step though versus the.
I think that's okay.
Yeah. Yep, I can give you some more information on that one as well.
And we're, you know, just to reiterate, we're at seven percent and ten percent is what the state's looking for.
Yeah.
Okay. So theoretically, we wouldn't have to go too crazy in order to achieve that goal.
Nope.
Challenging for a small town.
I agree.
What do you do if you're union, you know? North Grosvenor Dale or small, North Grosvenor Dale has a lot of factories, union, you know.
Union, few services, smallest population in the state. They got eighty-four there, they keep lost, but.
You could hurt one house and you probably made it, maybe it's not that hard.
Can build a clubhouse in the woods and put a toilet in it and, you know, classify.
And they're all.
Twenty square feet.
Yeah. Very fun.
You know, looking at the, looking at the administrative steps here, something that I know that the town has. Uh, tax incentives and relief programs. looking at the administrative steps here, something that I know that the town has uh tax incentives and relief program number seven for uh veterans and uh, I mean, that's something that, you know, might be able to if we're looking to add things into the mix. Since we're already, you know, we're already off of that.
Does, does that belong in planning and zoning? Because we have nothing, we've talked about that before. We have nothing to do with taxes, we can't even influence the tax code. We don't, I mean, that that is totally outside our purview as we've been, I think we've been told that. I I believe that we've had attorneys tell us that.
Well, it seems like, you know, it seems like since it's in this list, the state is sort of stepping in and saying, you should, you should consider this, so, I mean, whose toes are getting stepped on? I don't know.
Yeah, right, no, it's a very big point, Bob. It's 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 just sort of interesting that taxes fees and so, I mean, that that's a very delicate part of planning and zoning, which I don't know, I I I feel like we've been told to to back off of that.
Well, and you know, when when you look at, when you, if you sit through the uh process every spring for uh spending the town's money, I mean, the administrative steps, a number of these uh are saying, you know, you need to enlarge government.
Yeah, right, you're absolutely right. Yeah, that's true.
You know?
Rachel, just scroll down, there was something there about taxes and there was, yeah. Uh, and something else, was it, was it further up, further down, it actually spoke more.
Where's that one about more teachers and everything? I saw something down here. Investigate new tax or funding support programs to be put in place for teachers, town employees.
That's
What's that mean?
Yeah, I've, I talked about this a little bit um with John, but um basically, if you have like an affordable housing development, you could implement kind of like a point system um for like preference for the units. So if somebody is a town employee, um they basically would get like preference um or, you know, points for that.
Zoning regulations? Like, that seems funny.
Why? Okay, a teacher is relatively well paid, you know, next to somebody that's low income, right? Hopefully, our town employees are, a policeman would be. We don't even have policemen, but it'd be a state policeman around these parts, I guess, but Affordable Housing.
Some towns in their consideration of affordable housing aren't really looking at the low, low income earners um. But a lot of people in these groups are still making, are like cost burden by their housing compared to other jobs, um careers, fields. Um, so they're, they're trying to focus their efforts on housing, like volunteers and teachers and the people that make their towns run. So it's more or less appropriate for other towns, but maybe not for Wellington.
I would, I would also um point out that this is this is a, the Affordable Housing Plan is required to be adopted by the town. So this is, these are recommendations that will be in the plan, but the, and you guys are doing it as the Planning and zoning Commission, but the, these recommendations will not ultimately manifest in the zoning regs necessarily. It may be that certain, you know, things are explored at Board of Selectment, Ordinance or or Assessor or whatever. So you're the entity that's doing that, but this will not all culminate in a, in a text amendment.
So when we, when we have, when we have a public hearing on this, what would be included? Would this kind of stuff be included in the public hearing?
Well, the public hearing would be for the 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 actual plan itself, so, so we will have taken this list of thirty examples, figured out what you guys feel are most appropriate to further explore. And those will be included as recommendations in the plan, just like the P O C D.
Right.
But shouldn't, shouldn't our public hearing like concern things that have to do with the zoning commission?
So I think that the 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 Affordable Housing Plan will ultimately it it will statute doesn't say who needs to adopt it. Some towns, the Board of Selectmen says, we want to write it and the planning and zoning doesn't do it. Another town, it also doesn't say you have to have a public hearing. So, you know, I think that to make the process more productive because, you know, uh members of the public seeing these, these thirty examples don't I mean, there's no way they can digest all of them. So, you know, we'll use the results of the survey, the our work here with you guys and we'll develop the list of recommendations which will then be incorporated into the plan, so we, we perhaps won't include the stuff about some of the higher density multifamily, because we already know that we don't have the water and sewer to support it, so we wouldn't want to put that one forward potentially. Or or, you know, tax incentives or or something like this points based criteria for funding support. So generally, this entire list doesn't go to a hearing.
I I, I can't imagine though not having a public hearing of some sort, gonna make, you know, these sorts of changes and so forth without the townspeople weighing in.
I totally agree with you. You know, I see all these taxes out of, I wish that, I wish they would do more tax incentives for farmers and agricultural based things. I know that's not part of this discussion, but please, if we're going to be doing this. That'll be doing something for farmers too. Anyway, I digress. Very interesting, yeah. I I I agree with you, Walter, that this is probably another whole discussion almost by itself. Pass mandates and social distancing is going away pretty soon, so we can all meet in person.
That'd be wonderful.
It would be, for this stuff, absolutely. I miss that, that's why I I sit in front of this fucking screen all day, it's hard to come do, come back and do it except thirty minutes.
Clean the record up for that. Alright, so uh Mike, what what do you think? We could have a, we could have a uh special meeting or whatever at some point to really get into this. Maybe get, get something done.
Yeah, I mean I think that, you know, there are inherently some of these things that aren't, that aren't going to warrant as much time as others. Um, and so, you know, I don't know. We've got a pretty full agenda for the next meeting, probably. So we can maybe not for the next meeting, but what about for a, the following meeting after that? Would the commission perhaps want to have a special meeting a- at seven? And so we would have like start at seven to discuss this and then roll into the regular meeting.
Um, I I would support that.
I would go along with that.
Okay. Is seven sound good?
Yeah, that works for me, sure, yep.
Could Rachel flesh out some of these uh
Yep.
other items that uh we were talking about?
Yeah, I have on my list to flesh out um number seven about the tax incentive uh relief programs for seniors and disabled. Um, number five, the USDA CHFA loans. Um, number nine about ADUs, number ten about inclusionary zoning and number seventeen about cottage clusters um and like senior seniors pocket neighborhoods. So I'll flush those all out and I'll get um stuff in advance to you guys.
Thank you.
Sounds like a plan.
Alright. Item G, approval of amendments from February fifteenth, twenty twenty two. I have a motion.
I'll move that, do it, approve the minutes February first.
All in favor?
I'll abstain, I wasn't there.
Okay. Alright, no correspondence. Alright, I, public comment, the commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak. No business can be conducted here nor can any comments be made about any items on the agenda. Yes, Kathy.
Thank you. Um, Kathy Demers, forty eight Mason Road. Um, first of all, I'd just like to thank all of you for all of the work that you do. You're here very late at night and you have a lot of things to be working on for the town business, and I thank you. Um, I also really want to thank Mike Tomato, he is um wonderful to work with, very um responsive, communicative, whenever I have um sent him a question or a comment, concern, he responds immediately and takes action and I appreciate that and not sure all of you know how busy Mike is with so many other projects for the town. I really commend him, um, he's working on things like ARPA and EDC and um most of grants and so on. And um I just want to really thank him for all his work. Thank you.
Now, thank you, and Kathy, I want to make a comment, like throughout the whole like loves process and everything, you put an awful lot of effort into that and uh I think some of the uh the the changes and things that went into that project are direct result of some of your commentary, so thank you for that.
Oh, it's a team effort, we're all working together to make things the best for the town, thank you.
Good to go, Mike. When's your birthday?
The team effort, we're all, got a lot going on in town, but it it's certainly not because of me.
But you're certainly helping to facilitate the stuff that's going on, so we we do appreciate that very much, Mike.
Absolutely, that's why we're here and you feeling is mutual on mine with the commission, you, you guys are good to work with and we get a lot of really good work done. When you look around at other towns and you see what we're doing and what you guys are implementing. Uh, I think ripple effect might take a little time to to show, but but we are very much moving in 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 the right direction.
Alright. Staff report discussion. P O C D implementation update, open space.
Okay, so I just want to continue on going through the uh next couple of sections of goals um continuing from last week. Um, the P O C D, let me just share my screen here. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Through to where we left off. So again, continuing from last week, um, we're just going through the goals of the P O C D, kind of evaluating where we're at and um kind of uh evaluating what goals we want to put on, you know, our, our list to going through the, in the near future. The next section from where we left off was to preserve open space. Again, the overall goal being preserve open space in order to protect important resources, enhance community character and enhance the economy and quality of life in Wellington. So one of the first things that was tasked the P, Planning and Zoning Commission was to preserve open space acquisitions or easements at the time of development. Section five point fifteen point two of the subdivision regulations, we're preserving land in that location makes sense. Um, at least twenty percent open space in a conventional subdivision, um which is in the subdivision regulations and a higher open space requirement in open space or cluster subdivision. Which is also shown in the subdivision regulations. Going through these goals, it kind of talks about um open space and cluster subdivisions a lot. Just essentially over here, I put in a little diagram, kind of showing what that means. Um, just a subdivision that is designed to preserve open space.
We've been waiting for one, it's, we haven't really built one yet.
Right.
But there's a A lot of subdivisions built in the last several years, only little couple of houses here or there.
Yeah. So that is, that is the first goal that they lay out um. And that is in the, in the regulations. Um, is something that we have. Second is seek fee in lieu of open space, um just something I think we've done before. And then the third, to encourage and require um the use of creative open space site designs that support open space goals and protect natural resources. So I think that kind of, again, an open space subdivision is something that could fall under that. There wasn't much in that section for planning and zoning, a lot of it was Conservation Commission. The next uh section is to maintain and enhance community character. Um, the overall goal being maintain and enhance the overall character of Wellington by preserving and protecting the resources and features that contribute to its overall ambient and quality of life. Um, the first section is historic and archaeology, ar- archeologic resources. So, um, one thing that me and Mike were talking about, kind of gauging your guys' opinion on it and seeing if it's something that you guys were in favor of and wanted to um relay to the Board of Selectmen. One of the goals in here for them is to consider the adoption of a demolition delay ordinance for certain buildings or structures older than a certain age listed individually or other criteria. So for historic buildings and things of that nature.
Would that have to be on the inventory mentioned above?
I'm not
Sorry. Would item B be tied to item A in any way? Would it have to be on that inventory, the town's historic and architectural resources?
No, generally, the demolition delay ordinance is, is tied to properties of a specific age only.
So just because something's old doesn't mean it's good, so.
Right. I am, I I totally agree with you on that one.
Yeah, there's some properties that are very, you know, they're, they're historic, they have architectural appeal, there's things, there, you know, there's things about them that would make you want to preserve them, others are just dangerous and old.
In need of dynamite.
Yeah, this, this, the demolition delay ordinance is a, is kind of a polarizing thing on one hand. Polarizing thing, on one hand, you have, you know, a process by which generally it's ninety days and and I'm sure as some of you are aware the purpose for that is that um any person can petition the state to step in and prohibit the demolition of a building that's deemed to be significant. So by enacting this delay, you 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 create a timeline so that if someone wanted to step in and petition the state, they had the time to do it. But, and so while you, if you have a historic structure that this, this in theory can can stop those demolitions. You know, the same token, if you have someone who's developing a property and they have a hundred and fifty year old barn that's about to they have to wait three months before they can take it down.
And then three kids get squashed in it or something while you're waiting.
And the other thing that we see, a lot of towns, as you get down the, you know, Southern Connecticut River Valley shore, they have these ordinances. Then the the net result in many cases, and I'm not saying that these, these ordinances are worthless. Is that they recognize they can't take the building down because someone will petition the state. So they just let it fall down over twenty years.
Yeah, like those old mills and factories and things like that, correct?
Because they they can't get a demo permit, so they just walk away, turn the water off and they let the thing fall in on itself.
Or someone burns it down. Which has happened around Eastern Connecticut with some of the mill fires we've had in the last like ten, fifteen years.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because kids and and people, they find a way into these places because it's, it's fun.
Well, I I I think if you, if the, if a town has a demolition uh ordinance it's not that it can't be circumnavigated. And in a, in a lot of, in a lot of cases, instead of just taking the building and putting it in some dumpsters and hauling it away. It may offer someone an opportunity to salvage some of the material that's in those buildings. In Wellington, we haven't got any, you know. you know, huge things. But, you know, it it would offer opportunities to salvage. And, you know, I I think that's probably the biggest part of what we see in Wellington is probably a salvage operation. As opposed to just crunching it up. And there are a number of people. People don't realize what the value of some of that lumber is, especially in old houses.
And the language is pretty soft. The first word is consider. So it doesn't mean it's a it's a done deal. It means consider.
Right.
Nothing really wrong with that.
No.
Maybe it brings an awareness and maybe that's all it needs to do.
I mean, if there's some if there's an old structure and it's in if it's habitable in Wellington, we're talking most of the time about houses. If it's habitable, if somebody, you know, they just want to tear the house down just because they don't want to deal with it.
Yeah, right. Messina's button shop. You know, what if they wanted to set a mark did a great job of restoring it, but what if he just said, I want to get rid of that? That would kind of be a sad thing. He had decided to just tear it down. That would have been a sad thing.
Well, on Ruby Road, when they when a group approached, they wanted to build houses on the property that they were going to put the gun range on. Right when you go right to go down the hill, right before you turn that corner on the right hand side headed towards the dump, there's a small cape. Well, their thing was, well, wouldn't that look nice? It was just nice cellar hole next to the road that you drive into this new subdivision. You know, now there's somebody living in the house, right?
I tend to think of like some of the places along like thirty two, some of those small houses that are totally decrepit and abandoned.
Yeah, right.
Remember the house on the Love Site? That was another one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Just there's another one on Ruby Road too.
Yeah, they're not the the places like that are not salvageable really, you know, they're they're saving in on themselves.
Right.
Dangerous to even enter.
Right.
Well, I I think the, you know, the point is, is Andy said, it says consider.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, it says consider an adoption of an of an ordinance, doesn't it? I mean, if we if we adopt the ordinance, then it's an ordinance. Well, that's true.
Well, that that's not us. That's the Board of Selectmen. So
This one is for the Board of Selectmen. Kind of just wanted to gauge where you guys are at and see if that's something you wanted us to relay.
I don't know.
I don't know that we need an ordinance, but certainly you don't want to tear down anything of value.
Right. Don't want to indiscriminate destroy stuff that like you say, that there's a lot of stuff that has historic, has history. There's that, what's that one building on Route thirty two where you have to go down that real steep driveway and that building down below? My older brothers and sisters talked about that as being a place where they went to dances. And, you know, square dances and all kinds of things back way back when. I have no idea what it's used for now. I don't even know who owns it. It's probably fallen apart, but it, you know, it has a historical memory, but it may not have a have a historical value.
Or a use right now.
Yeah, or a use. Yeah, I don't even know. Terrible driveway. I I I don't even know what it was originally for, but it was a dance hall at one time. And stuff.
Well, I I just don't I don't think if we left it in there, you know, to consider a demolition delay. I mean, that's something to kick down the road, really. It's it's just sitting there.
Agreed.
Yeah, pretty hard to get an ordinance done. So that that's probably going to sit there for a while.
Yeah.
So, uh, the next goal in there is to consider tax and zoning incentives for historic properties. Uh, if it would help preserve historic structures. And this one, me and Mike were kind of talking about the South Wellington Village District Regulations. That's kind of one of the you know, goals that that promotes. Maybe we could consider creating some kind of incentive to reuse those older buildings and infrastructure that exists down there.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And and one of the things that has to be understood in order to have be considered for tax and zoning incentives, especially tax incentives when it comes to the federal government, the house has to be listed on a registry. And South Wellington and only a few other houses in town are listed. And a lot of times money becomes available for new windows, roofs, and people just aren't aware of it. And money, and the money comes and goes.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think it's a good idea. And if if that was if it would help, I mean, it it, you know, it would help everybody. There's like three, three, four historic districts in town. And if the houses are listed and you have something like that, they can get money from the state and federal government when it's available. All they have to do is apply.
And those four.
What's that?
I didn't know there was four. I only know the town green is South.
Oh, there's South Wellington. There's the area around the green. There's East Wellington and then Messina's.
Oh, yeah.
The house in the button shop.
Cool.
Okay. Next thing in here for planning and zoning, if development is proposed, use techniques such as open space cluster development. Again, they're going back to cluster development to not only preserve open space, but preserve working farms and serve important agricultural soils that could be utilized for commercial farming.
I don't have any of that, but I approve.
Yeah, I think that's important.
It's kind of gets back to what Rachel's going to be working on for the me anyways, for that some of that cluster development stuff.
Okay. So strive to preserve natural resources, open space and other characteristics that contribute to community character. So here they're going back again to open space cluster zoning to protect archaeological, archeological, historical and other character resources. Another one, P and Z's. If development is proposed, use techniques such as open space clustering, again, going back to open space clustering. This time to preserve scenic areas and features. And then another goal here, consider submitting noise provisions in the zoning regulations for deep review. Actually, sorry, I skipped over.
We talked about that. That was a tough. That was difficult to manage. What?
You won't be able to enforce it.
Well, that's right. That was that way. Didn't that come up with the FedEx and all that stuff, that whole noise thing? Who's recording it? When are you doing it? All this other stuff. It seemed really complicated.
Who's going to enforce it?
I think
Want to walk around there with a little noise meter by who calibrated it, who built it? What year did I buy it in? Where was I standing? Which way was the wind blowing?
I believe that this went, the Board of Selectmen considered this to some degree and I think that you know, they they said, let's review it. Let's go through the process and formally consider it. And I think it was determined to be too complicated and I don't think it had a lot of support.
I don't think so either.
Yeah.
I I I think it has to defer to some sort of state higher power because it's 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 so many variables.
Well, and also if you're going to say you're going to call the police on like a noisy party or something, they're barely interested there. We don't have a resident trooper.
There's no
We don't want to pay for a resident trooper.
And if they get there and there's no noise and there's no violation, then off they go. Nothing, there's not much you can do. I think we do a pretty good job of that. We've already established times when people can start and stop instruction and demolition and operating their quarries and a whole lot of stuff we've
Well, we did it even with the farm stands and the entertainment and the farm venues and everything.
We were we were pretty rich. I think we're very mindful of that. But to try to go out there with some sort of meter because somebody's being noisy on any particular night. Sometimes I hear the trains from South Wellington. It sounds like they're in my backyard. Other times I can't hear them at all. So
Yeah, you can hear the racetrack in Stafford too.
Yeah, right. Yeah, certain nights you hear it like it's like it's right your drive. Other nights, never even notice it. So I think noise is a very tough mode. I would I would I recommend we stay out of that.
Sure. So I skipped over a couple. One thing we noted was Public Act four ninety. Continue using that and encouraging the retention of large parcels of forest land. And continue using Public Act four ninety to encourage retention of undeveloped private land. The Board of Selectmen, yeah, updated that.
That was five acres. Now it's twenty five?
Yeah.
So that's a big jump.
There was input from you guys that they incorporated into that and they updated that.
There are three or three categories. There's farm, forest and open space. So forest land and farm are predefined at the state level. The the open space designation is defined locally. And that was the one where the Board of Selectmen asked for your input as a commission. And that was established, I believe, at the five acre point. But I believe they they said it. This commission recommended.
Okay, and then trees and vegetation. When development occurs, protect significant trees from damage and consider requiring multiple trees be planted for any tree removed and encourage the planning of native species to discourage the planning of invasive species. These are things, you know, we could do through, you know, the zoning process rather than writing regulations.
Yeah.
Under terms and conditions, that kind of
Right, exactly.
I think that's the best way to approach them.
And then wrapping up here, enact architectural site design guidelines, which inform applicants of what is expected to from a design perspective and promote appropriate development and consider the establishment of one or more village districts to help promote good community design. Again, looking at the South Wellington Village District, these are some things that are incorporated into those regulations in terms of using the infrastructure that's there and just in general establishing that village district.
Well, encourage enact architectural site design guidelines, which inform applicants of what is expected from a design perspective and promote appropriate development.
We we have Bob like when when like Dollar General was going to get Bill Bob was all over that.
We have one of the hottest looking Dollar Generals in the state. I'll tell you.
Doesn't that doesn't that sort of conflict with our saying that it doesn't matter how big your house is? You can do what you want. I mean, I don't know if somehow that there seems to be a concept there, but are we going to say?
You can't say character. Don't say it.
Yeah, you don't say character.
Design perspective, promote appropriate development.
Do it, Andy.
If I'm saying, oh, we we support non-traditional building, those words are not in the reg- in this document, but if you say we support non-traditional or we support non-traditional. I use container homes as a gross exaggeration as an example.
Lime green.
Yeah, but uh, now we're going to say what we expect. That this, I think there's a little bit of a concept there.
Well, when it comes to commercial and you have and you have small clusters like we have the small villages. It's, I don't think it's inappropriate to ask, and that's what we did. We asked. We thought that it would be nice if they put the windows on. It would be nice if it had a pitched roof. They 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 understand and we got what we we suggested, Andy, and more. We didn't ask for the weather vane.
Like it, I I I think I I don't like bow house. I think it's roots are the way to go. But I mean, this this, I mean, you click box one there, Frank Frank Lloyd Wright wouldn't be designing any houses in Wellington. And I don't know if that's really where we want to go. I think we want the Frank Lloyd Wrights to come in here and design a house once in a while. I'm not really sure what that means right there. Promote good community design. That sounds pretty pretty overarching to me. According to design, well, from this commission or from the next commission or the one after I'm dead, who knows what that's going to be? Maybe it's maybe that's the right iteration that as as time goes on, that this this evolves, but I don't know, it seems kind of funny that we'd be, we're all squishy and say you do whatever you want till you get here. And now we're going to tell you what it's going to look like. I'm not maybe I'm not understanding where this where this gets deployed.
I think that came from, remember when the zoning regulation, the subdivision regulations were being massaged for open space from standard? And at at the time, one of the conversations that was being kicked around was designing developments that, well, it's in our instance, for an example, would could be developed to look like the area around the town green.
That's right.
And I think that this is kind of an offshoot of that thought at that particular time.
Oh, yeah, I guess. I don't know, but I mean, underground homes. There's all kinds of very innovative architectural approaches that could very well fit into the landscape and be absolutely attractive. It seems I don't know, this seems a little bit. I can't, I don't even know, Orwellian or something where we're going to tell you how it's going to have to look.
So one of the things that we included in the South Wellington Village District, because we recognized that how things looked was an important component of making that whole area feel cohesive. But we didn't want to demand that people, you know, put a specific type of shingle on the house. So the the building design section of that reg says that as part of the application, they shall submit a narrative document describing how the proposed building design draws upon the South Wellington Village Design Guidelines contained within the South Wellington Preservation Planning Study. So we're asking them to look at that report and use that as a a foundation for how they design the building, but we're not saying shall be, you know, made of criteria, you know, shall use colors from the following color palette and shall be used, you know, non-asphalt shingles. And so we're trying to get them in the neighborhood, but not not be so restrictive that we become an architectural review board.
Right. And I guess that's what I'm thinking that we don't. Yeah, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just it does this seems sort of outs, it's sort of a conflict with the 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 spirit of so many of the other regulations were allow the landowners and the developers to have more 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 input leeway. And here we're saying now, we're going to impose some criteria.
And my laptop battery is almost dead, guys. I don't have the charger with me.
Plug it in.
I don't have the charger with me. It's thrown up warning, so.
Okay, this last one's pretty easy. Maintain regulations to ensure sand and gravel operations are conducted in a proper manner. That site restoration upon completion is guaranteed, which essentially is saying have regulations to ensure the sand and gravel operations are in good standing.
We just approved one, a special permit that had stuff about the restoration and how many years it was going to take and so forth.
Yeah.
Incorporated in it.
Well, you know, it's it's interesting that there's some of these Well, you know, it's, it's interesting that there's some of these smaller operations just fall through the cracks. And uh one of them is across from uh, uh Wellington One down on thirty-two. Up, uh up the back road there, going up the hill, I mean, they, they had a permit to dig that sand up, that gravel out of there. And uh, you know, when it came time to put the topsoil back, they had sold the topsoil, and then they just walked away. I mean, you know, some of this stuff still falls through the cracks, it shouldn't, but it does.
Yeah, it does.
Uh, you know, you just, what do you have to do, take and, uh when somebody opens up a pit like that now. Uh they have to put up a uh, a bond. So that it's guaranteed that they're going to re, they're going to reclaim the uh, uh place, I don't know. That, that's the only way you're going to force them to do that, otherwise the topsoil, next time around, the topsoil is going to get sold first and then. When everything's said and done, you know, they, oops, that's it, and there's, you know, no consequences and they have no regrets.
Right.
So, you know, maybe a bond is in, in uh, in order, next time someone comes for a gravel operation.
Yeah, I don't think that Navarro Road one has done any business in years, but I guess what they said a couple of years ago and what they said every year. They keep it open. I guess they, they probably want to sell the Becker, I'm sure that's their.
I don't know, well, I don't know, I don't know who has their fingers in that. So anyway. That's all I have to say tonight.
Alright, uh.
That is all I had here.
Okay, Mike, real quick, uh was it, was it brought up at a selectman's meeting that Moose Meadow Road got damaged by trucks? Hauling stuff to the Loves Travel Center?
It was.
So what's going on with that?
So. It, it was, it was a site contractor for the Loves property. Um and it, and so the, the materials being hauled offsite and a property owner on Moose Meadow. Um was basically asking them to, to import it to his property. Um and they, they did um a mu, fair amount of hauling and. At some point, the property owner realized that the road was being damaged and they stopped and I, and I. I called the Tom over at Loves and I said, I don't know if this is, you know, you guys are what the deal is, but you can't be on that road. The problem that we are running into, and this is something that would, you know, be running through Eric is. The road was not posted for no trucks, the road was not posted for weight capacities. It was a dump truck on a road and yes, they had a lot of volume and, or a lot of activity, right, number of trips in a day. But there was nothing inherently wrong with the trucks that were on the road, it's just a really old road that has needed to be replaced for a really long time. That them funding hasn't been committed and so it was mush. I don't know if Erica will ultimately be reaching out to the site contractor to try to have a discussion. That would be, that would be. You know, to Troy and.
Yeah.
Alright, just wanted to see what, what you knew about it. Alright. It's, it's nine forty-four PM, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Night, everybody.